July 28, 2021, Provo City Planning Commission Meeting. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Both are legislative. We'll hold public hearings on those and the commission will be making recommendations on those two items. And we'll just go next into the Pledge of Allegiance. I appreciate Commissioner Knudsen leading us in there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will take a roll call. I'll ask each commissioner to state their name and whether they have a conflict of interest. We'll start with Commissioner Jones.
Ally Jones, no conflicts.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Commissioner Henry?
Brian Henry, no conflicts.
Commissioner Urkiaga?
Laurie Urkiaga, no conflicts.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Robert Knudsen, no conflict.
And Commissioner Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Thank you. And I'm Dave Anderson. I have no conflicts. Item number one, Community and Neighborhood Services requests a general plan amendment to clarify the existing West Side development policies and future land use map with a Southwest Plan Intent Statement. We'll turn things over to Hannah Salzy.
Let's jump right into this. So this is for the Future Land Use Intent Statement for the Southwest area of Provo that was drafted by Councillor David Harding. It is being presented by staff. We did not draft it, unfortunately. Councillor Harding can't be here tonight. He was the Chair of the West Side Planning Committee that created the original policy documents that we're still using now. And he just felt like as he saw them implemented, they needed more refinement to better capture their original intent. It is intended to clarify and support the existing plans and the land use map, not replace them, and just to help get residents, developers, city staff, UTA, other invested, interested, active parties on the Southwest and West Side on the same page moving forward. Here's a brief agenda for tonight. I'll try to keep it concise, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to go back and talk about anything. We'll go through briefly the purpose and process, the history of these documents, the existing plans, the West Side development policies, and the future land use map, the proposed intent statement and what it says exactly. We'll read through portions of it, and the comparison of some of the changes, then some time for question and discussion. This is an opportunity for the public to give feedback. There will not be a vote whether to approve or deny this intent statement. This is feedback from the public, the Planning Commission, who will then give feedback to staff as it goes through the process to eventually get back to the council. The council will also have another public hearing on it, so this is not the public's only opportunity to make their voice heard or express their thoughts. Going through the process, you can see we've checked off a few of the boxes already. We're at the point of a public hearing. Even after this content on the slide, if the council does adopt this intent statement, it calls for them to then come back to the Planning Commission to direct staff to create ordinances. So this is the first part of a very long process that will be very iterative with public hearings. Okay, from the very beginning, planning for the West Side and the Southwest has been incredibly collaborative and has involved a lot of compromise to get to the policies that we have today. In 2016, the West Side Planning Committee, again chaired by Councillor David Harding, was created to recommend policies to guide development. The West Side Planning Committee recommended the West Side Development Policies, which was adopted by the council. The Southwest Area Future Land Use Map was then created based on those policies. Councillor Harding, back in June, to the council then recommended this Future Land Use Intent Statement to better refine and clarify. Going into our existing documents, the first is the West Side Development Policies, which touches on the seven different categories listed up here. But the major focus in the intent statement goes back to point number three, to encourage sustainable residential development patterns. And here is what that says. This block A through D is especially relevant. The intent statement references it again. We'll read this again together as we go forward. It'll have more context. The Future Land Use Map is the second current guiding document. I will just skip to the larger image on the next slide. As you can see, there's the, does this still? Very faint. Okay. You can see the airport out here with some residential. This will be the sports park, Lakeview Parkway, with some mostly residential areas and some higher density nodes at major intersections is the current plan. This has been a huge collaborative effort to get to this map, and it has been fairly successful. There have been a number of developments that have already followed this policy. Oh. Here is the larger text on that map that's impossible to read still, as big as I can get it on this slide. It breaks down the estimated recommended acreages per land use with additional details for development. We'll get into some of those later, too. Getting into the third document now, this proposed land use intent statement really has four sections: intent ordinances, density, and future development patterns. I'll cover those individually. The intent here is to reaffirm the council's intent to implement the West Side Development Policies and Future Land Use Map, which they've been doing. It just recommits them. Second part, request the ordinance of the Planning Division in drafting ordinances and in particular zoning to accomplish Development Policy 3A. These would be drafted in the future and at that time would again be subject to this entire process of public hearing going through the Planning Commission and the council. The public would have the opportunity to weigh in. Third, density. The overall density of the Southwest area should be four units to the gross area. Each development in area designated as residential should be kept below four units to the gross area. That would be an increase of about 1.2 acres from calculating it to the net area, which has been the current calculation. And this last part, subpolicies 3A through 3D, those highlighted yellow boxes I showed earlier, apply to all residential developments as much as practicable outside of the area designated as the mixed-use village center, which is just a higher density node at one of those intersections, and infill developments of less than one acre. We do not intend to approve rezon request without sufficient assurances that these policies will be followed within each development. It then goes on under this subpoint to give examples of what those integrated developments might look like. This is, I hate reading off slides. Sorry, guys. It really is just the best way to make sure everybody's on the same page. This three, or this West Side Policies 3A through 3D are what it said would apply to all residential areas as much as practicable. They are to-
And when we talk about residential areas, just for clarification, we're talking about those yellow bubbles on the map?
Yes, those big yellow spots of residential areas, not LDR MDR nodes. Yeah. They are to establish ordinances to require a mix of housing types, lot sizes, and designs to accommodate various stages of life. Detached, single-family homes should be the predominant housing type, and the use of other types should augment, not detract, from the single-family feel of the area. Housing types should be mixed without barriers separating types or densities. The scale and style of residences should enhance the surrounding areas regardless of housing type. Here's what would actually change were the Planning Commission to recommend adoption to the council and were the council to adopt this proposed land use statement. Currently, staff has been calculating four units to the acre on a net basis. This would change it to four units per acre gross. Again, that increases it from about 2.8 units per, yeah, 2.8 units per acre net was what it was. I'm explaining this terribly. Let me take a step back. 4.8, or four units per acre equates roughly to actually about 2.8 units per acre when it's net. Were it to be gross, it would actually be four units per acre and increase about 1.2 units.
The reason being is when, when you do net, you actually subtract the roads, and that's why your overall density is a little bit lower.
Yeah, that's this next slide here. So net excludes land that cannot be developed, and gross excludes nothing. It therefore includes more land. It's just a way of doing the math. This is from that Future Land Use Map that I showed, part of that blown-up box. You can see here it excludes some non-developable areas and so calculates units per acre net. That would change. The other change would be the granularity of housing type integration. Right now, a mix is required, but there's no level of granularity required for that mix. Either way, special, or SFD, not special, single-family detached homes would remain the predominant housing type. There would just be a required finer grain to the mix. Density on paper, the current policies don't state whether it's net or gross. Net has been assumed by staff. It's just our standard way of calculating. This is one of the things that Councillor Harding felt needed to be clarified. At the time, the committee meant gross, but since it was unspecified, staff had assumed net. One major note is the sewer capacity. Public Works has been heavily involved with all of this and one of the reasons for this four units per acre net or gross. Density limit is for sewer capacity. That's simply what the West Side can handle. However, Public Works uses units per acre gross for their master planning, so increasing it to four units per acre gross would still be within the framework they were calculating for. It wouldn't overwhelm the sewer capacity on the West Side. Going further into this granularity of housing type integration, as you can see, there was, in the original land use map, a requirement for different types. MDR nodes had to have four to five housing types. LDR nodes had to have a minimum of three housing types dispersed throughout the development. However, again, no specific requirements for how finely those should be mixed. When we're talking about granularity, it's the same granularity we see everywhere else. It means the same thing in development. Single-family homes would remain the predominant housing type. And as I said, the intent statement includes 10 examples of ways to integrate housing in residential and LDR areas. I will not read all of that. Don't worry, guys. You're fine. But it is available in the intent statement if you'd like to read them in detail. Here's an example that the intent statement pulls. You can see there are a mix of five housing types and some commercial. It's difficult to see with the brightness on here, but they are integrated into a fairly seamless development where one house rolls into the other type. The decision points before the Planning Commission today are whether to approve this and recommend it to the council, and if so, to decide if there are any revisions you'd like to recommend as well. Feedback we've gotten so far from the public, we've seen some mixed report, or mixed support for some sort of reaffirming commitment statement to the current policies. But there has been, from the letters, general opposition to increasing density and the integration, the two main changes. From the Planning Commission in the discussion that we had two weeks ago, the feedback we got was that perhaps the requirements shouldn't be mandatory. Maybe they should be optional or suggestions. Maybe we should consider creating a zone that does require and not simply permit a finer integration of housing types. The document should be easy to understand with lots of pictures and very clear examples, and perhaps it should only apply to projects over a certain size. That is everything that I have prepared. I get that I went through that pretty fast. Hopefully, didn't skip anything. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will go ahead then and open up the public hearing. If you would please come to the podium and state your name. That'd be great.
Do you want to allow neighborhood chairs five minutes or two minutes?
If you could just be succinct, that'd be great.
Also, as I was saying back, there were several people on the committee. So if you don't mind, if I can give that interpretation. Can you go back? All right, I think it's just clear that we're trying to get, you know, get clear what's going on here. So actually, that zoomed-in box with the numbers. Now, when we went through these calculations today, we actually, maybe I'm wrong about something, but we considered that it was four units per gross overall. What we thought, when I-
Understanding, and the others with me here, is that this 587 non-developable is the airport protection zone that got taken out of that calculation from the overall area. And if you look up here, the only one that says net units is R1. And the reason we did that is because if you have LDR nodes and MDR nodes that are above four units gross, you have to have something below four units gross to average out, right? So that's my understanding there. Maybe we need some more clarification on what is, what is the right calculation here?
I believe that that also includes the open space park areas as well.
Does it as well? Okay, but not roads, et cetera, right?
The intent is, yeah, I think what you're talking about.
Yeah, so that's something that, that we need to think about. The reason why we have rez areas at three units gross, basically, right? Let's just create the common denominator, the common unit. Three units gross is to balance out the MDR LDRs that we have four units gross overall. So that's something to remember as you're thinking about it and going through it. Okay, so let me get into my role as neighborhood chair. My name's Jonathan Hill. I'm the neighborhood chair of Fort Utah. Last time I spoke to you as a member of the MAP Committee, I limited my comments then to talking, you know, from the committee's point of view, and now I get to share what my neighbors feel. So the question I think we have to ask ourselves is what is the ideal neighborhood? And as I've lived many different places in my life, I grew up in the Bay Area, went to college here, I went to grad school in New York City, I've lived overseas, right? I've lived in many different communities. I have found that that answer varies for everybody. Everybody has their own idea of what they want. When I was in New York, I knew people that could never imagine not living somewhere as dense and as active as that city, right? The center of the world. On the other side, I know farmers in Idaho that if they can see their neighbors, that's too much, right? So we have different answers here. And I think we are meeting here to evaluate one particular view of what that ideal neighborhood looks like. And the short answer is, if you ask my neighbors, for the large majority of them, that their view of the ideal neighborhood differs from the view presented before you today. And I want to talk about, from a neighborhood point of view, how we view the kind of benefits and costs of this. First of all, we do not see a lot of benefit in here. The stated intent here is to increase the granularity or decrease, I don't know which way that goes, make it more fine-grained, the mixture of mixed housing types. Now, when I look at my neighborhood, Fort Utah, it is only two miles long and about half a mile wide. It is not a huge area. But in that area, if I were to walk you around my neighborhood, I could show you mobile homes, I could show you small homes, I could show you apartments, I could show you townhomes, I can show you starter homes, I can show you larger homes that people move up into. We have a wide range of housing types. And not even correlated with those, as in certain types were living in certain areas, we also have a very diverse neighborhood. I could introduce you to people who struggle to get by and people who are quite wealthy. I could introduce you to my Mexican neighbors or my wonderful Dominican neighbor. I know two Brazilian families. I know a Japanese family, a Filipino family, a family that the wife is Nepalese and the husband is from India. I can introduce you to Argentinian immigrants and Tongans. We had South Africans on the street. We had people that just moved out that lived in Denmark, right? We have a wide range of individuals in our area. We also have age demographics. We have young couples who are still going to school. We have small families. We have larger families. We have retired couples. Some retired couples that stayed and some retired couples that moved into our neighborhood when they retired. So we feel like the plan right now is already creating the diversity that all of us want to see in each neighborhood. It does not need to be made to be on every single block. We already have the diversity we're looking for. Other benefits, such as viability of public transportation, decreased housing costs, I think are greatly hindered by the fact that it needs to stay to four units gross overall, right? When you think about why are townhomes and apartments less expensive? Why do they allow for more public transportation? A lot of that is actually not the housing type. It is the density that comes with that. And we're trying to mix housing types without changing the density. And to me, that really takes away a major benefit that we could have with the mixed housing types. However, in contrast, we do have real concerns. I think the number one major concern of my neighbors that was expressed in neighborhood meetings and in emails to me and to you guys is that we do think that it changes the feel of the area. And I think it's intended to. Why, why do something if it's not going to change something? And in our area, if you think about that ideal neighborhood question, we moved there to get away from the hustle and bustle of most of Provo, right? To get out of it. So many times I hear the refrain over and over again, "I moved to West Provo because it was different than the rest of Provo." And we want to maintain that difference, have families that stay a long time, grow up in the area, and our kids can be friends growing up and we can interact in a lot of ways. We also feel like it does increase the mix, but in the wrong direction. If you zoom out and look at the whole city, you guys well know that we build far more apartments and townhomes than we do single-family homes, right? And when we look at our neighbors, many of them are in starter homes and a few moved to another house in the neighborhood, but most of them, when they outgrow that first home, move out of Provo, and we lose those friendships. They move away. They move to Lehigh. They move to Saratoga Springs. And that's what we feel like we're missing, is that step-up house. And by creating these mixtures, because we can't increase the density, we're not increasing the overall availability of houses. We're changing one type to the other. So for every apartment that gets built, you take away a single-family detached home. For every rental unit you create, you take away an opportunity for purchasing a home in this city. And we think the mix in this city needs to go the other way. If we were not building apartments and low-income housing in this house, this city, I would share that concern. But we are, and we're building a lot of it. And then finally, we feel like it takes away a lot of freedoms. I know developers that have come in, I've worked with several of them as they've tried to build in my neighborhood, and they want to make equality-type development. They want something that they can be proud of. And yet, this is going to create a situation where they're just trying to check boxes. They're not doing it because it's the best use or the best market value, but because they have to get it through city council. Also, landowners, we have several landowners who have decided to sell and stop farming, but they still want to live there. And they want to know what kind of neighbors they're going to have, and they have opinions about what kind of developments they want on their land. And this would take that control away from them. And so in many ways, it kind of constrains the neighborhood, and it constrains the landowners, and it constrains the developers. At the same time, somehow, it's also too vague in some ways. Because on many of these requirements, for example, the percentage that would be required, et cetera, it is left to the discretion of the city council. And that can create conflicts, that can create problems, that makes it unpredictable for the neighborhood. We may have developers having those situations where the neighborhood says one thing, city council has another, and they're stuck in the middle. And so at the very least, it needs to be clearer. But in the end, what I hope you will consider is what are the real benefits to this area? And what are the real costs that it's going to incur if we move forward with this intent statement? And perhaps the answer is, it's too costly, right? Maybe we shouldn't move forward. Or if we do, we should try to minimize those costs and maximize the benefits as much as we can. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
I'm representing the Provo Bay neighborhood. My name is Aaron McCullough. I'm one of the vice chairs of that neighborhood. And the context that I can share in one of the neighboring neighborhoods, and having been involved in a lot of this, is the last three development proposals of memory for housing were the Durant subdivision, the Bullock subdivision, and more recently, the Knutson subdivision. And the, the neighborhood feedback and requests were, when the initial developments were proposed and shown to the neighbors, the neighbors in two or three of those cases requested fewer homes, thereby larger homes on bigger lots. In other words, less density. The only one that didn't, you know, the only one that the neighbors didn't have a request on specifically was the Knutson property, because that was already the way it was designed. Larger, single-family homes, larger lots. Generally, I feel that having been on the MAP committee along with Jonathan and several others, that we spent so much time getting it so good that we believe that this, I will say in the nicest terms, the proposal that is here is unnecessary. And I believe that, just on a personal note, that, you know, conservative government should be very slow to mandate and require granularity, which will affect homeowners' rights, landowners' rights, and free development. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the first item?
How are you? Brian Taylor, Sunset Neighborhood Chair for, I guess, Sunset April. Yeah, okay. And I've been doing this for 25 years, yes, or more. I can't recall. I've been tried to get fired for many times. The, and I've been, I've been talking to my neighbors for years and years. One of the biggest concerns about the West Side is the city using West Side as a guinea pig, as a dumping ground, as we'll tell you what to do, when to do it. Kind of like the whole junior high thing, you know, they're just dumping it on them. And they're, and whether they want it or not. And I think that that's kind of the attitude that most people feel that the city is treating them like. When you go back to the 2020 plan, you had a plan to widen 1600 South from Center Street to 6th South. Never happened, never went forward. In the 2040 plan, you have 1600 West widened and constructed out from 1150 South to the highway. I'm sure that's going to happen because you're going to have developers going in there. There is no plan to deal with 6th South to 1150, because the city doesn't want to move the power lines. It's a pretty, pretty expensive to move each one of those power lines. So the city has broken its promise over and over and over again for the West Side. Now that we're proposing a junior high to drop into foot printers, all of that traffic's going to dump onto 1600 West. Thanks a lot. Yet again, the city dumping on West Side. And that's kind of how this is feeling. I read a really good book and I highly suggest it. It's Simon Sinek's Start With Why. I didn't see a single why in the presentation. Why is this necessary? Why do you have to create this type of density? Where's the numbers that say that you're going to either have higher tax revenue or lower tax revenue? You're going to have happier communities or less happy communities? You're going to have crime increase or crime decrease? There's no whys in any of this proposal. It's always better to start with why. Tell us why you plan on doing this. Why is that important? When we asked that question about the junior high, great. Why do you want to move it? Oh, it gives us much more area to build and we can build it out very quickly. Really, what's going to happen when you need a new junior high? Move back to Dixon? This is one of the things the city council hasn't answered yet. And this is one thing that the proposal doesn't answer. We worked on this West Side plan before any West Side Planning Commission ever came together. There's no rhyme or reason to why their plan was any different than our plan, but they decided to take the credit for it after we already put together what we wanted. That's what we wanted. It moved through and it was voted on, and that's what we got. And we were grateful, very grateful for that. I would like to see it maintained that way. And I would like to see the agro culture of the West Side maintain that type of, that type of feeling on the West Side. I mean, as Jonathan was saying, most of the people out there feel that one, one house per acre is high density. And if you ask the stubs, I don't want anybody behind them. So for those people that are, that have felt as though the city has broken their promises, dumped on them time and time again, I would really, really consider that you think about why you feel that this is very important. And help them understand that if you're going to have this type of structure and require this of them, maybe you should have they, their buy-in to that. Right now, you don't. So in conclusion to all of this, please, start with a why. Because last time, nobody, nobody really wanted this. So, thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to this? Please come on up if you'd like to.
Becky Bogdan, Lakewood Neighborhood Chair, Acting West Side Area Rep. And I'd like to start out to say, when this went before council, D.R. Horton was there. And they talked about if you're going to do something effective, you need about 50 acres. And then you can plot the densities and you really need a planned community, is what Chrisell always says. A planned community would be like Broadview Shores, right? Where it's not necessarily set in stone that you have to sell your property to Broad, to Ivory Homes, but yet it's an unsaid rule. So one of the concerns I have is if we go through and go forward with this, that we are going to allow someone like D.R. Horton to, because they have the power, they are big enough to do that. When I took, I take tours for council candidates. When I took a council candidate who is a city planner on a tour, she told me that it was really hard for smaller developers to go ahead and put in different housing types into a project. It was easier for something like D.R. Horton to go ahead and do that. So I'm really concerned that if we go forward with this, that we are setting ourselves up for a planned community for one developer. The other thing that I would like to say is, my neighborhood, we have been waiting and waiting and waiting for the written portion of this master plan that has never come to date. And in that written portion, my understanding was, and the way that we've been communicating with the residents, is that those LDR nodes would have three different housing types. Not three different types of townhomes, which is what we got in our neighborhood, but three different housing types. So as far as Harding's plan goes, I can see how that would be beneficial in more of the LDR nodes where you have higher densities, that you can kind of mix and play with those. And I would like to see if this intense statement doesn't go through, I would like to see some sort of written portion to the master plan to clarify those things, because those are the expectations and those are what the neighborhood more wanted. And that's what they had expected, but that's not what we've been given. The other thing I'd like to point out is that you guys talked about the southeast area in the last planning commission meeting. And we spoke about how many disadvantaged children there are south of Center Street. I sent over all those numbers a couple of days ago to the planning commission, to council. We do have some pretty high numbers in those schools south of Center. It's not just what is in this 10-acre plot. We are also looking at what is already built around us. And just my neighborhood is just like Jonathan's. I don't have a trailer park. I do just ride up the street. My kids are shipped to Franklin, even though I'm in West Provo. Our neighborhood, for the most part, are starter homes. And we see the same thing. People move in, they have a couple of kids. There's nothing in the neighborhood to satisfy a move-up home. We have been lucky enough in the last few years that we have had move-up homes. But those kinds of things, even the principal of Franklin, when we were doing the master planning, she was like, Becky, I need something bigger. I need something more stable for this school, for this community. And Dave Connect was telling me, because he, he did custodial work for the LDS church. He said, with his relationships with the stake presidents in the West Side and the bishops in the West Side, the thing they pleaded with him the most was that we could have something big enough for families to stay in the areas, because they are starting to get very transitional in these areas. So please consider all of this when you consider how we want the West Side to look like. Because Jonathan's right, people move on the West Side for a reason, and they want it to be different. Thank you.
Item one, anybody else?
My name is Thomas Halliday. Live on the West Side, just little Robert Knutson. Set on the Development Committee that, for the West Side. Also, I'm involved with the Board of Adjustments. As has been stated, we spent a lot of time trying to do the right thing, going to a lot of meetings, doing a lot of research and trying to come up with a idea of where and what kind of housing would be beneficial to the city as a whole and also is what would be accommodated and people would like in their areas. When you, when you talk about starter homes and larger homes, most people are pretty comfortable with them in most areas. But when you start talking about multi-level, multi-level housing where, where they're smaller than, you know, 1,000 feet or maybe 1,500 feet, square feet, they're going to be young people and they're, they're going to be transient. They're going to be moving in and out because there's not a lot of room there. They may have one child over there and then they'll probably be moving on to find other areas. And the neighborhoods that are, have been there for a long time, don't seem to like that coming into their area, because it's, it's a lot different than what they've had to deal with. Young kids stay up a lot later. Most families don't like to see that in their neighborhoods. There's a lot more movement in the evening hours when people like it quieter in areas. And it just seems to be a more ruckus-type atmosphere that goes on a lot later in the evening. And so people seem to feel that it's not quite right for the area. Now, we've seen those type of developments that seem like they've worked pretty good, but they've come into areas where it was large enough to build a development that has all of this criteria at once.
Thank you. Can we ask you to, can we ask you to wrap it up fairly quick?
You bet. So we kind of looked at three different criteria. And one was that there need to be thoroughfares there, bus transit and, and trains and things like that for that kind of, for the larger amount of people that will be in those larger homes or smaller homes that are multi-tiered. We felt like that they need to be on larger thoroughfares throughout the city. They need to be developed as a whole development where people have the choices. They come into the area to live in that area next to larger tier homes and smaller spaces. And we just felt like that when we're next to neighborhoods that have already been developed for a long, long time, they just don't seem to work as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Item one?
Thank you. My name is Rick Smith. I'm a resident of the Fort Utah neighborhood. I also served on the committee that developed the MAP. One of the, I, I think the fundamental principles of good government is when you're going to accomplish a particular objective or a goal, you should use the least restrictive or the least intrusive method to accomplish that goal. And the map that's been created does that. It, it recognizes the desire to have a mix of housing types. It respects the infrastructure challenges that exist on that side, and it accomplishes the goal. And never did we consider, or even, even fathom, as we were developing that map, that there might be a requirement that every single subdivision within those areas have a mix of housing types. It's simply unnecessary to accomplish the goal of getting a mix of housing types. As Jonathan, I think, really well explained. It's likely to affect, in my view, negatively affect property values. The developer that's looking at a development just north of where I live talked about how having to put a couple of three-plexes in that area is not an economically viable thing to do. And the only way to accomplish it is for the developer himself to build them and own them and rent them out, which excludes most people from being able to develop their own land and excludes a large number of developers, if that's what they have to do to accomplish that mix of housing types. So it's, it's, it's simply not necessary to go to that level of granularity. It, it, I think, represents an unnecessary and unreasonable intrusion into private property rights. And I encourage you to not approve that sort of, of requirement of granularity in order to achieve the objective of mixed housing type. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Bennett, landowner in Provo, looking to develop 23 acres. My whole thing I'd just like to ask is I hope you just send this back to city council as a recommendation. If you want to put as a requirement, if you increase the density to four units per acre, that actually changes our, right now, at the four units to net, we can do 68 to 70 units on our 23 acres we have on Lake Shore Drive. If you increase us to four units to the gross acre, we'll be able to increase it to 95 units, which under 95, about 95 units, we could do a lot more mixed housing types, but it would take away from the fill of all the neighborhoods. So we do not really want to support that. But the financial side of it, we would benefit from doing 95 units. So if you do increase the four units to the gross acre, there is financial gains for us, but it does take away from the neighborhood fill. So just wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, Ross Welch. We're companies, a landowner here in this area and also a developer. And I want to just mention a couple of things. First off, I like the phrase of a starter home. We, we build homes in the city center of Eagle Mountain, and our cheapest home is $440,000. It's shocking what a starter home is today. But anyway, when I look at this and I'm going, I like the idea of the gross, because as I acquire property from landowners, I look at it and if master plan has a collector wrote on their property, their net density is not very high, because it's not available for it. Therefore, I can't pay them as much for their property. It seems to be, harm that landowner more just because the master plan happens to have more thoroughfare through their property. I think a gross approach treats landowners more fairly, gives the opportunity for fair value on all aspects of it. And, but I do agree with the issue of granularity. It is nice to have a little more flexibility in terms of what the market is driving and as long as it fits the overall design of the community, and that's good. But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else? Wonderful. Okay, please.
My name is Dale Camp. I'm a resident of Provo. I'm a real estate broker and my son and I run a team with a fairly large brokerage. We represent lots and lots of buyers of all kinds of homes. We don't sell many in Provo. Not because people don't want to live in Provo, there's just nothing available. There are subdivisions in, in the areas where I live, for example, that are changing. They each have a life cycle. So you've got some new families moving in, but far less availability than what the demand is. I think in the case of, of what Jason Bennett just spoke about, one on Lake Shore Drive, this developer is ready to go. He's ready to build. He's ready to provide some of that inventory, whether it's 68 or whatever. I think the citizens have made very clear what they would like to see, the local citizens. And I'm just speaking to the market. We just need inventory. We need it for your families and everyone else that would like to live in Provo and for the last number of years who've been unable to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'll be quick. Mike Nielsen. So I'm definitely opposed to forcing each landowner or each parcel to do this multi-unit development. I live on 3,000 West, 240 North. We have a great developer. He's come in, said he wants to do single housing and they told him, no, like you need to present some plans with mixed. And he's listened to the neighborhood and it's between 30 acre lots, half to one acre lots. And the proposal is to possibly put a fourplex mansion next to my house. So I mean, I did not move into that neighborhood for that reason. And I also feel like our neighborhood east of us, we already have a lot of low income housing, small homes that all of our friends and people in our ward are moving out because they have nowhere else to go. So I don't feel like it needs to be forced that we have townhomes and apartments. Maybe on Lake Shore Drive where we've come in, spent millions of dollars and there's large plots of acreage. It's a great, it's a great idea. Cause you can have some boundaries between the neighborhoods and people that are buying there know what they're getting before they purchase. But in our neighborhood, I don't think it should be forced that we have to get stuck with like a townhome or a fourplex mansion, whatever that is next to me. But anyway, that's just my opinion and I hope that they don't force every developer to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everybody just about in the room, right? Get everybody? Gary? Well, hold it for if you want. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then and turn the discussion back to the commission. Any questions? Questions of staff?
I have a question and several comments. Is that okay?
I'd be surprised if you didn't. Absolutely.
He means that in the kind as way possible.
Certainly do.
Dave looks forward to my comments every two seconds. Okay, I just wanted to clarify something that Hannah said in her presentation. Because in my mind, this four units per acre works throughout the entire west side because there's some low density areas and there's some high density areas. And between the two tight, you know, between those two extremes, we, it'll all work out in the wash. But you made it sound like it only applies to the ones that are in the RES overlay on the Southwest Neighborhood Plan, not the LDR overlay. Is that correct? Did I misunderstand that? It'd help if I turned my mic on. Let me go back. So as far as, as far as the intent statement, so I'm talking about the overall intent statement where it's sort of mandating granularity. It's just the RES?
It would be everywhere, but in residential zones, it should be kept before, below four units to the gross area.
Okay.
Just on the lower end so that those areas do balance out the higher areas of density asset that mentioned.
Okay.
But it's throughout the whole area.
All right. I just feel like so maybe this is now I've got my question answered and I'm going to just say what, because we're discussing, right? This is good. Okay. Four units per acre means that smaller units, so in the RES areas that we are envisioning means single family in most of those areas. And the single family is still supposed to be the predominant type according to the language in this proposal. They would still cost as much as a single family home because they still took as much of the land, you know, they may have only a very small fraction of it that's called their own, but as far as the developer of that land is concerned, there, he's, they're getting less for the same amount of land. So I'm just confused as to how that really helps the housing stock. I'm really, as a planner at heart, just requiring mixed densities in these small areas flies in the face of traditional planning in my mind where housing types would typically change gradually. And so I don't have a whole lot of faith that forcing someone to do this would make a magical utopia appear. I feel like especially when some of them can be developed on a very small scale comparative to other large amassing of land, it's hard to really guarantee that that would make a nice cohesive neighborhood flow. And there's also language in the slides that Hannah showed us. It was before the one that had the, the granularity, the rocks and the pebbles in it, if that's helpful. And there was an LDR definition that said that it needed to transition gradually from single family to twin homes or something. Where did I see that? Yes. Is this the one before it?
Yeah, this is the slide right before. I think you're talking about point number two here, LDR, density with twin home or bungalows.
Yeah, transitional density buffer at the edges adjacent to R1. So as you're, this is, this is where my mind wraps around what planning kind of looks like is it's nice in a, in a bigger scale of a neighborhood to have all of these housing types existing, but that doesn't mean it always works to have them smattered in the middle. And though I think that works in in some situations, I really, I really don't feel like that was the intent from what I've read in the language and seen on the maps of, of what this vision for Southwest Provo was intended to be. So I, I think our main discussion tonight is whether the mix needs to be fine grained or if it can be clumped, essentially what it boils down to, and then whether we mandate that. And I, there was one other thing in the, so page five of the staff report. On the staff analysis section B, the intent says confirmation that the public process is best served by the amendment in question. And the staff report says the proposed amendment clarifies the intent of the west side planning committee and would be clearer and more understandable for developers and landowners in the area. And I would question whether it really does clarify and whether it makes it clear. So I'm, those are my comments. I like to hear what you guys have to say.
Thank you. With all due respect, do you mind, I want to follow up on Lisa's question with the question of staff. If we can look at the map really quickly. And yeah, I'm gonna prove my ignorance here by asking this, but just to be sure. When we talk about the, the nature of the area, what the infrastructure can support and that type of a thing, if I understand things right, there's been a line drawn around the area and a number of acres in the area identified, and that's been multiplied by four, and that's a ceiling. And we're working within that or we're working up to that ceiling to distribute a certain number of, of future homes, accounting for what's there now and all that. And that's what leads to this, to where it's not completely homogenous. There are areas that this prescribes for higher densities than other areas and that type of a thing. So the net versus gross, that is getting more fine grained, but it's really just focusing on, you said the yellow. Is that right? Am I understanding that the right way from what you said?
So yes, in part. If you're calculating it net, it would exclude certain areas like parks, airports, areas where you can't develop are simply not factored into the calculation, don't become part of that denominator of four units per acre. Gross would include the whole area. So you're just giving yourself a larger denominator to work with, is how the math shakes out.
So the net then is actually as if the, the area is limited to what's in yellow and that's multiplied by four.
I believe net includes slightly more than the yellow, like some of these other residential areas of orange and red. Yeah. But it's just areas that could be developed.
But there's not just one density of residential growth that's designed.
Yes, it's anywhere that could be developed for residential at any density is what's calculated in net right now. Yes.
Last one, I promise. So we've seen the plans, for example, for the projects that are down on South End, next to the, the Parkway. Those pockets are identified, and I apologize, I can't quite make out the numbers on this. Going in the door, somebody knows that they have a chance to get the zoning to allow for more than four homes per acre. Right? And then it's simply the other areas that are maybe like designated that we're talking about 2.8 or four. Is that right? Do I have that right? Is it? And let me tell you why that's a big deal for me is partly because I don't think three in a stick or four matter. I really don't in terms of what a neighborhood is likely going to look like and that kind of a thing. Any thoughts there?
So I think that they, if you look at this map, there's an intent for in these yellow areas that is single family detached homes. That's kind of what we infer from this map. And the density in those areas is four units to the acre net, which calculates to 2.8 or whatever that is. If you also look at this map, you'll see that there are specific areas that are designated as LDR or MDR. Those have a density allowance that is greater than that by code, right? So at, at this time, it was like LDR was 15 units to the acre. It's currently 12. MDR is up to 30 units to the acre. So that all calculates out to four units to the acre gross over the entire area. But the intended areas where that density is increased is actually indicated by the designation on the map. Does that make sense?
Which is only the yellow.
Correct. So the yellow is the area that is intended to be less than the four units to the acre. And the other areas are those that are intended would, would by right be more than that four units to the acre.
Because they're already above four. This would only really affect those other.
Correct.
Sorry to beat that to death maybe.
Nobody expected a math lesson tonight, but this is kind of what it's turning into.
Mr. Ricky. So as I'm looking at this, I, I can understand Commissioner, Councilor Harding's desire to have the stuff mixed with a bit more fine granularity, but I don't know that I just don't see this working in a development that's less than, say, 20 acres. And I could see some mix, but limited. I'm more a fan of carrots than sticks. And I don't know if there are any incentives that can be offered to developers who choose to increase the mix of housing. I, I have no idea if the city can do anything like that, but it would be more of the larger, larger developments where this would make sense. We talked earlier about that sunrise development and it has, it works, but it's huge.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Knutson?
You've heard from several of my neighbors here tonight. And they spent a lot of time coming up with this map. They spent, well, I don't know. I'm sure they could talk to you about the time that they have spent coming up with this. And I think they tried to, and I think they did in a very good way, fulfill what the people in West Provo wanted. And I think the people in Provo, West Provo want the smaller, lower density. And I certainly know that they do not want to be forced by the city to have to break from single housing in, in their development to put in different housing types or different housing mixes. I can see that maybe in a, in the, one of the lower medium density areas where maybe some of this could be put in, like like Laurie's talking about, where you have a big area that you could put equal, you know, some small, different housing, mixed housing in there. But I think for the most part, on the west side, the people really want to have the low, the lower density, they want to have the single family residence. And so I, I'm not in favor of the city mandating to a farmer or to an owner of the property landlord down there that they have to put in mixed housing.
Thank you. Look to my left here. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if I could have staff pull up a webpage. An address on Zillow, just for illustrative purposes of what a
Do you want to give us an address? Yep.
Yeah. Let's do 372 West, 4620 North in Provo. What I'm, what I'm having him bring up on, on Zillow is, is just an illustration of this type of granularity that's been bandied about. And if we could zoom out to the, or look at the, the map underneath it. Okay, now here you can see, this is in the vintage vintage point office complex. And you can see these six plexes. Right? They're, they're all under around 500, 500,000. And you know, you look, you look at the, the amount of space they take up and you compare it, look right across the street at 450 West and, and you see million dollar homes. Right? So I, I constantly hear, I, I did my undergrad in city and regional planning. I'm, I, I constantly hear this fear of property values being decreased. And in practice, I, I don't see it happening. We talk about constitutional rights and, and the rights of landowners and, and neighbors. But when we talk about the densities we choose and the densities we allow has a huge impact on the underlying landowner. If you take, just looking at that, that area, you see a six plex and there's, they're each around 500,000 or so. That's $3 million. And then there's how many, how many buildings like that are there? There's six in that area. Right? So 3 million times, that's $18 million, right? And then they take up the same amount of space as, as, you know, six units might take the same amount of space as a single family home. That's 1 million. But, but the value of the property, you're affecting the underlying value of the property of the landowner who, who wants to develop something like that. And, and I think there's something to be said for that. We've had, in, in the past year that I've been on the planning commission, we've had farmers and, and different people come up and say, this is my retirement. This is, I, I've been sitting on, this has been family property for over 100 years, 70 years. And they're counting on, on this to to develop, save some lots for their families, develop lots for, for neighbors in the community. And, and I think that this density that we're talking about, I don't know if it's something quite to be feared. And I'm I, you know, I wonder if you know, there's someone who said that, that the neighborhood's already diverse enough. And I wonder if, if we don't allow more granularity or detail with these densities. If you just left it as it is, would you still have the same diversity within that neighborhood? You might not. You know, I, I'm very, very mindful of like every decision that's come up in the past year that I've been on the commission, I've been very mindful of. I, I read all the letters from the community. I, I take notes. I I read all the letters from the community. I I take notes on on people who send those letters and and speak up when they've called in on Zoom meetings. And and I just, I I want to reassure you that the the rest of the the commission. Uh, we were very mindful of of your concerns and I'm, I appreciate you to to be patient enough with us to to contemplate some of these decisions and but I I think some of the underlying fears. I I don't know if they quite hold as much water as we might think they do.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, you ready?
Um, so you know, the question was asked, why? Why should we do this? Why here? And I would like to echo with some of the statements that were previously mentioned where your families and neighbors can't find places to live in your region. Some of them, you know, are step up homes, but I was just looking at what's listed on your side and some of the lowest priced houses are five hundred thousand dollars a home. All right, well, there are going to be some that are more and some that are less. Well, but that's not true. That's why we fill in with density, isn't it? You lower.
Yeah, and right now. Yeah, that probably is best. Thanks.
When you look at it, those townhomes are still less than those multimillion dollar complexes immediately next to them. That's how houses work. You know, I have friends who have grown up in Provo who simply can't find a home to live next to their family because they don't exist. And these are people who grew up in these neighborhoods alongside you. If I mention their names, I'm sure you would know some of them. So that's why, why here? So people can live with their families and the people that they love. Um, you know, we mentioned a conservative government, a conservative government would avoid zoning in particular and would let developers come in and buy and build as they choose. And as we've heard, apartment complexes are very profitable right now. So maybe the low is not exactly what we would want all the time, but we're also preventing the extreme high, having every single lot bought and then turned into apartment complexes. So I don't know, I think it's a balanced situation as much as it is what we want.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry.
Uh, one thing I want to clarify real quick with staff. Uh, as I was reading back through this statement, I'm not finding anything that that clearly defines what the granularity needs to be. And it sounds like, I feel like there's a little bit of a misconception that every development has to have X amount of townhomes, X amount of sing, or duplexes, X amount of single family. But as I read through part of this statement, it sounds like it's just a granularity more within single family with maybe an occasional town or twin home or townhome where those make sense.
That's correct. Yes. And it does state that single family detached homes should still be the predominant housing type. There should still be a vast majority of single family detached homes with other types scattered throughout as they make sense, but without uh, separation. For example, you wouldn't have a little pocket that's just townhomes and they're sort of excluded on their own block. They would be scattered throughout the community. And everything that I showed on screen is the full content. Um, except that we didn't read through the suggestions for how those would be integrated, but those were listed just as suggestions. None of those are required.
Okay. I think it's important to also note that this is just the intent statement and this intent statement specifically states that we would come back with ordinances. And that's probably where those additional granularity requirements would be defined.
Okay. Because I I agree that requiring every development to have willy nilly, a random, you know, a townhome in every development. It sounds good in practice. I've seen it over and over again where it just creates problems. But I do agree that we need more granularity in the housing. Uh, and so if we can do something like Robert did, can we pull Zillow back up? Go to thirty-seven fifty North Timview Drive. Uh, Timview Drive. I think this might relate a little more to what the west side is in that granularity of single family that I think was David's intent for this. To to be able to create starter homes mixed with middle income homes mixed with some luxury homes. Uh, but in in this neighborhood, I know there are people who, when they move up, they move one street over, not three or four miles across. And my biggest worry wi- with kind of the typical way we do things. I mean, if a developer can build twenty homes, he's going to build twenty homes. If the minimum lot size is eight thousand, practically every lot will be eight thousand. The only ones that'll be more than that are odd shaped lots. And so I think that's the intent of what we're trying to get here is that within a neighborhood, just because eight thousand is the minimum, doesn't mean every lot should be eight thousand, that we can have some tens and twelves and fifteens mixed in to to create some of that granularity, even though they're all single family. But we can see some granularity in that. Yeah.
I think because it's a cross.
Oh, it's a cross street.
It's just giving you the overview.
Okay. Well, I guess I can describe it. On one street in this neighborhood, there are homes from three hundred thousand to over a million. There's fifteen homes on the street. There are ten thousand square foot lots. There are three quarter acre lots all on the same street. And it it just, it creates such a dynamic. And there's a lot of research that shows that when you have that mix of income, instead of the typical, you know, eighty homes starting at three hundred and fifty thousand going to four hundred thousand, you get this monoculture of people. And when you've got that fine grained mix of of income levels and and different things. It it shows in the research the largest resiliency against decline. Decline is the number one indicator of increased crime, not housing type, not density. It's decline. When a neighborhood starts declining, that's when the crime moves in. Uh, crime exists in single family. It exists in townhomes. It exists in apartments. But decline is what determines how bad that crime is. And so I guess we're not getting property values showing up there.
I think if you zoom in, it it will.
It pops a little bit. There we go. So you can see right there in the middle, there's a four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar house next to a six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar house next to a five eighty. It's a very granular, even though they're all single family. It's, there's, there's some, some wider granularity to it. Go up just a little bit, or sorry, pull down just a little bit more. Or sorry, the other direction. Now there we can see a nine seventeen next to a five fifty, next to a seven sixty-six across from a two hundred and seventy-five. That granularity creates such a dynamic in a neighborhood because you get older people, middle aged people, younger people, all living together. The teenagers can babysit for the younger families. The elderly can help with the wisdom they have. It just creates such a dynamic neighborhood, as well as the different income levels. The more expensive homes are constantly being renovated, which helps stave off decline because other people see, well, if they're renovating, it must be a good neighborhood. So other homes get renovated. And it just creates this dynamism in the neighborhood that keeps it fresh, which keeps the crime down, which keeps the neighborhood resilient to to the things we don't want in our neighborhoods. I do agree that neighborhood design is subjective, that where people want to live is very different. And we all have different tastes and different. Some people love living in downtown Provo and they want the density. Some people want the quiet farmland. Uh, which is one thing in this statement, I think it mentioned creating an agriculture committee. Was that part of the? I don't think. Oh, it has been created. Okay, okay. So yeah, just deciding what does this neighborhood want to be? I think the intent of this is to create a little bit more fine grained within single family. Not to throw in townhomes and twin homes, and everybody has to include some of those. Because frankly, townhomes have a habitat that works well for them. You don't put penguins in a forest and expect them to survive. Townhomes in certain areas don't work well. There is a specific place where townhomes, condos, single family all work well. And I I would hate to tie a developer's hands to including something that is the wrong ecosystem for that uh, that development type. I think that was all of my comments. I appreciate the the input from the neighborhood tonight. That's good to know what your intent for your neighborhood is. You have to live there. So we definitely want to be sure that you're happy with the outcome. I guess those are my comments.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, I might be all over the place. I'm going to try to be really quick. And I'd like to come back to this Zillow page right here where it's at with this part of the community illustrated. But before that, if we could, I hope this isn't too much trouble to switch back and forth, go to the that. Thank you. Perfect. I'm going to start here by way of saying simply that I think this, as I understand it, as a level of planning where we're looking at fairly broad areas with fairly broad parameters with the anticipation that individual development proposals are going to be submitted and vetted and and presented in this forum and to the city council for consideration, where there's latitude for a developer to propose things there. Um, I think that's appropriate. I I'm very comfortable with not requiring necessarily neighborhoods to be exclusively single family detached homes. Or homes necessarily even constructed on on lots of a similar size and allowing for just flexibility for something to present something that within maybe I'd say a certain density range, let's say up to four homes per acre. And that's what's given to a developer to work with is they they put a project together that gets vetted and for better or worse, you know, it gets uh, it gets reviewed, maybe it gets approved, maybe it doesn't. So that being said, I do not think having a mixture of housing types in close proximity to one another is any problem at all. Certainly not when you're talking about contemporary construction, things built same era, same developer. Um, I've never seen any evidence to suggest that that is a problem. I don't think there's any, any inherent significant difference between three homes per acre development versus four homes per acre development. You hear it a lot. You hear concerns about density being an issue. Um, but particularly at that range, I think the end product that you get is really, really similar. In my mind, absolutely not a problem at all. I absolutely agree that Provo needs more diversity. I get the impression that this particular gentleman here has has kind of tracked what's been approved in recent years in Provo. And uh, it's frustrating me to no end to see um, what I think is a really similar kind of development approved over and over and over again. In places where there already is a lot of that same kind of development or development that really produces a product that can only be obtained by, you know, people, let's say, just within a certain kind of income level. I think we made neighborhoods likely less diverse and more homogeneous with things that have happened in just recent years. So it's really hard for me and frankly, really frustrating to have the question asked about making neighborhoods or making, let's just say, Provo, that's really how I'm looking at it, Provo more diverse by looking at it in this context, just one part of the community versus citywide. You know, so when maybe we're looking, this would be a good time to make my point if we could go back to the Zillow image. I think it's something that frankly, it really has frustrated me. If you can scroll to the south, I believe, just a little bit. Keep going down. I want to look at Tempe, which I think we're in that neck of the woods, right? So just, just to the the east then, from what we're seeing right here. And Robert, you'll know better than me, but um proposal for townhomes here. Uh, in between the structure that is kind of on the northeast corner of the Tempeu campus and the building to the east of that, what was it? Three townhomes, four, something like that? Four?
It was six.
Yeah. Couple of years ago, maybe several iterations produced before a positive recommendation was provided by the Planning Commission to approve the use of that property, which frankly, I think is very difficult to use otherwise. Um, I can't remember if the recommendation from the Planning Commission was unanimous or not. I think it was. And the city council denied it. We saw something similar, saw many more iterations before I think a bullet got put in in one that is not far from where there's now a Jiffy Lube just on the east side there of University Parkway near the veterinary hospital. Townhomes next to townhomes, next to twin homes. And I understand the city council denied that as well, which um, the frustration that I have then simply being that it seems like uh, very different expectations and and hopes and plans would be applied to different parts of the community. If in certain parts of the community, there's not a willingness to approve diversity, but yet to require it someplace else, again, it's part of what just kind of, kind of blows my mind about the whole subject. And frankly, um, I really do think Provo has some really significant land use concerns that that are worth investing time and effort and energy on. This one for me just is, I don't see how it's even on the radar screen. Again, appropriate planning, developer, four units to the acre max. It's up to you to present a design that satisfies people. You do that, project gets approved. It's that simple. Give them the flexibility and not every community would allow for somebody potentially to have, you know, mansion style home in a neighborhood. Um, but if that works, great, in my opinion. Let them propose it, let it get vetted. If it works, super. But the idea of requiring it. Um, again, that's a big challenge for me, but um, again, inherently, the concept isn't a concern. Um, it's just how it's, it's proposed to be applied in an isolated part of the community. Uh, maybe most importantly, kind of back to the idea that Provost's been all about apartments and housing stock that really is is uh, I think in the marketplace, a rental product, um, very hard to find. New homes being built on lots where maybe somebody could have a home and room to park a boat next to it. Or uh, you know, just to um, to have some of those things that I know other people leave Provo to find, to find properties that are are just a little bit larger to to do that type of thing. That's where they put down roots. And I think Provo loses um, in a lot of different ways when um, when those folks can't stay in the community and be a part of it. I also don't think that necessarily needs to be the predominant, you know, housing type and in a world like we have today and a market like we have, but it seems like there's been very little of that in Provo, which is one more reason for me to be happy saying, all right, developer wants, wants all ten thousand square foot lots in a development in this part of Provo. Great, because it's not happening in any place else. Um, so those are my thoughts. And we've all talked, so maybe we're ready for a motion? Anybody wants?
Can I summarize what I think we all said? Because we had some diverse. I feel like we like the idea of encouraging um, this sort of development concept. But I only heard maybe two of us say that we like there to be a statement that mandates it. And so I don't know what that means as far as emotion, but I I'll stop there. I won't give any more opinions about that matter.
Well, to summarize, I mean, I think that might be the vote. That might be how we ultimately summarize how we feel. But I I I agree, and maybe just to restate, uh, the development, um, the concept that the council person is presented here. I I think that's fine. I think that does make for great neighborhoods. I think Provo has different needs now. And the idea of requiring that, if that's going to be required, then I think we need to talk about it citywide. And how to get, how to get some single family homes in parts of the community that haven't seen any of that for a long time.
And I don't really feel like an intent statement is needed because the the greater planning document has already got that covered. The pictures and the words to me both already say that. got that covered. The pictures and the words to me both already say that, and the intent statement seems to add things to it that are a greater vision for it, but not actually what's in the vision of the document. So I feel like they don't actually represent each other, is my feeling.
If anybody else wants to speak up, please just.
If you could go back to the presentation and the little square that is the diverse housing types.
Just tell me when to stop.
The mixed image. So yeah, this one is way too busy for what we're talking about. And I kind of fear that having this particular image is changing the perception that's happening. So I, I don't know how expensive it would be to have somebody draw up something that was more like four units to the acre that had some variety. If we could go back to that Zillow page, if you still have it, and go back to the area that was north of Tempe, that couple blocks north. I'd like to point out, I think it's one more set of, it's like the next road up, and next road to the north. Yeah. So we've got, we already pointed this out. There's, if you look at the end of the cul-de-sac there, there's a $900,000 home next to two homes, one's 300, one's 500, another 900,000, and then you've got two units there. And that, I think, is kind of what I perceive as being what we're hoping to see. That two units doesn't necessarily look like two units or wouldn't need to. So I want to give flexibility. I mean, it might be, but I would also like to encourage the creation of neighborhoods that maybe, you know, drive down the street, the houses get bigger, the whatever. And the lots get bigger and a variety of lot size. I think the biggest problem we have is that all the lots have to be the same size when you say, I want R18 or R110 or whatever you're doing. And it just turns more into cookie cutter. And I think, I think really all we're talking about is not necessarily cookie cutter. So I wonder if it would be possible to have the document revised to give a little bit more example of what it would really look like in Provo, and not that super dense block that is the example.
Yeah, I agree with Laurie. I feel like I feel like Dave had the right intentions in mind with this in that we're not getting what research is saying creates more vibrant communities, and he's trying to find a way to get that. Because, as Laurie said, if it's an R8, there, I mean, it's just right down the line, 8,000 square foot units. As many as can possibly fit, and it does become very very monocultural. There's not a lot of diversity in the housing stock. And so I think his intentions are right. I'm struggling with how this like it's in the right direction. Just, it feels like there's still so much vagary in it. I'm not sure what honestly, I'm really not even sure yet how to vote on something like this. Because I like the direction, I just feel like it's missing some, some well, like Laurie mentioned, that one picture I don't think should be included. That's a 12 to 15 unit to the acre image. We're talking about a neighborhood that's four. I don't think that image really fits. And I've, I've seen those images. I think there are some that do exist that are finer grained or are lower density. So I see the intent, and I think the intent is to create vibrant neighborhoods because frankly, the developers aren't doing it. They're not bringing diverse neighborhoods. I mean, 50, 50 units and they're all, 80% of them are the same lot size doesn't create a very fine-grained, I mean, that's three-quarter inch cobble, given the example that was earlier stated. So how do we achieve that if the developers aren't going to do it? I think that's kind of what triggered it, is the developers aren't doing it. So how can we encourage them to create a mix that looks more like the Zillow page?
Genuine question following up on that. I agree with, with what you said about the intent. And again, I don't think the mix is bad at all. I think it can be healthy and good. Appreciated the example that Commissioner Gonzalez pointed out. I think that is a great example of how you can have a mix in close proximity to one another, and I think that makes for better neighborhoods, not worse. In terms of just maybe a little bit higher level, the concept that we're talking about here, how do you feel about that being applied maybe citywide? Where that's the effort, to where, you know, again, the neighborhoods that seems to be only single-family developments get approved in. You know, it's, it's, it's applied there. Just like neighborhoods where we seem to only see stacked flats and apartments, you know, there is a requirement to diversify new housing stock that's approved in those places. I think if that were the context that we were talking about this tonight, I'd be excited and I'd really be ready to try to figure out how to make that work. But I feel like this is really starting at the wrong end for me, is I think the places that that are going to be harmed by decisions that we're making in this era of growth should be front and center. They should be where we're the most concerned, honestly. Development that happens in this part of Provo, I think, is going to be high quality. It's going to be highly valued. It's going to be, it's going to maintain its value well, et cetera, et cetera. Sort of like I've said, whether it's three units the acre or four, you know, with some twin homes in the neighborhood or not. This is not a critical decision for Provo, but in parts of the community where it's 30, 40 units to the acre, and they're all being occupied by relatively similar demographics that sometimes conglomerated do have some challenges. I think that's going to be a challenge for the community for a long time going forward. So that's again, if the context were different, I'd be much, much more comfortable with the conversation, but just to maybe put a finer point on what I'm thinking. I don't think this is ready to be approved in any form, the intent statement. Even the need, again, I like looking at the plan higher level, treating it that way and making each project, you know, speak to its own merit and going about it that way.
I will agree with you on the citywide, statewide.
Which isn't going to happen, which is a particular challenge for Provo, right? We see things happening in Provo simply because they politically are not achievable elsewhere. That's a challenge.
Right. And I think why this is happening on the west side, I think most of us see that as the last large parcel of land in Provo to develop. We want to be sure it's done right. We want to be sure that it is a vibrant community. We want to ensure, I think the intention is, we want it to be a place that, I mean, in Provo, there's a stereotype, the east side is more desirable. I would love it if the west side was just as desirable, and I think we can achieve that. The question is, how do we get there? Yeah, I think, I think all of Provo should be desirable. And to your point about diversity in different areas, yeah, in downtown, that ecosystem, to have a greater diversity is just going to make it a better place. In the, in the east, there definitely needs to be more diversity. In the southwest, I mean, all parts of Provo need greater diversity because we do have areas that sadly are very monoculturalistic. And it doesn't create vibrant neighborhoods.
As vibrant.
As vibrant, right.
Go for it, please, yeah.
Well, given the scope that we've just discussed, this question may be less appropriate now, but you know, we dislike this idea of the government coming and mandating certain types of housing, but I just wonder, like, I think that we can agree that in certain areas of town, we need more diversity. So how do we make that happen? I mean, we just used that example of that lot of townhomes next to Tempe that wasn't able to happen because of pushback. So without some kind of mandate, how do we ensure that that's happening as the town moves forward? Like, what kind of carrots are available to us?
And sometimes different situations have different opportunities afforded. The examples that I referenced, that was a matter of the city council saying yes. You know, that really was it. And I don't, I don't think very often you're going to see proposals made, but what there are people that are really concerned about what happens in their backyard, meaning expect pushback regardless. And, you know, sometimes it is political political will and, you know, that kind of leadership that takes it to happen. And I think that's the right approach. I really do. I don't think it necessarily should, should require rules for a community to understand kind of what's going on and to to try to balance things out. But if that is what it takes, I'd support that. But the real thought that I had was, I think this is a general plan issue. That's really versus neighborhood to neighborhood. This is something that I think needs to be talked about in that context and having particular data points to look at. Maybe by way of trying to make sure that there's some balanced housing inventory throughout the community. That's my thought, really.
Well, just, and maybe this is that chip on my shoulder again, but given the current formulation of our governments that are looking at this compared to the demographic that is one of the most quickly growing in Provo and what seems to be the one that will be taking over the communities in the next few decades. I just worry that leaving it to these councils will make it so the people who will actually be affected like this are not represented in the decisions being made.
I believe you're right. But I also believe that it's just as right to say that there is a demographic that is exiting Provo regularly because there's just as big, and I think the numbers would say, a much bigger deficiency in other types of housing, you know, maybe that aren't geared at, let's just say, a college-age, recent graduate, that type of demographic, which I think is particularly impressive in Provo. Simply because Provo has developed housing stock for that over time. I think if there were other communities that had borne more of the responsibility, I would say, to provide housing for those types of, for that, again, maybe just for that younger demographic, you know, maybe first-time home buyers, people looking maybe to rent something that's a little bit upper end and and those types of things even. I think the balance that exists in Provo is not necessarily as much because of people wanting to rent in Provo as it is people not being able to rent elsewhere. And then on the other side, I don't think there's an efficiency of people that would like to own homes, you know, on lots that are 8,000, 10,000 square feet. But I think they move elsewhere because that product is not being developed very often in Provo today, so it it's two different ends of.
This might be a better for like a work-study meeting, but just to follow that up, I don't think that's true, right? Like, a lot of my demographic, a lot of people who work in tech, a lot of people, these young people who are filling these, not to say wealthier jobs, but these higher-income jobs are moving to places like Vineyard and Lehigh because the communities are much more welcoming to them there. You don't have this open hostility against people occupying townhomes and smaller houses that a lot of the single people wouldn't mind occupying because, you know, who has time for a yard when they're working a ton of hours? So I think it would be interesting to see if that really is the case.
I think, again, that's great data maybe to look at. So to look at how other communities have grown in Utah County, maybe as part of a discussion to see how Provo stacks up in that regard. I think that would be enlightening.
Let me just interject for a quick minute because what I'm hearing from the Planning Commission is that this is a really important issue that should probably be discussed more broadly than what the scope of this particular intent statement is providing. And you as the Planning Commission are a resource to the council, right? Like, your recommendation is going to be really important to how they view this particular discussion, but also the broader context. So I would just keep that in mind as you're thinking about what you would recommend to the, to the city council on how they have, maybe they addressed this particular issue, but I think it's okay to think about that more broadly.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion. There's more comment?
We can discuss the motion.
Okay. All right. I am going to move that the Planning Commission continue item number one. And I hate sending you back to the drawing board, but I think we need this after the discussion. Continue item one, Community and Neighborhood Services requested general plan amendment to clarify the existing west-side development policies and future land use map with the southwest plan intent statement. That's the motion. And I will add what I think is the recommendation that we look at applying at citywide, that we look at illustrating it in ways that are more applicable to our community and maybe have a work discussion about it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Question on the motion. Okay, Commissioner Jensen?
I just wanted to discuss if that would be better to deny so that it doesn't imply that we're ready to talk about it in two weeks, that we're waiting for maybe some housing data and separating it from the west-side plan more. So to me, I feel like it's more of a denial. Maybe Mr. McGinn is about to answer that question.
Motion was to continue. Oh, was I not? Gary McGinn, Director of Community and Neighborhood Services. So you really have three options in front of you. You have a specific proposal with specific language. And one recommendation could be to recommend approval. And one with, and possibly some changes to it. So specific changes, and you would recommend approval of that document with specific changes. Another recommendation is denial. And another recommendation is to continue. Now, if you continue, that means that this body is continuing it. And you would be continuing it for specific information that staff would bring back to help you formulate whether you recommend approval or a denial. And so you need to, if you want to continue it, you need to really ask yourself, what information do you want staff to go back? What specific information could we bring back to you that would help you recommend to the council this document? Now, if the issue is, well, we want to look at things at a broad citywide level, which is an appropriate stance to take, then perhaps a recommendation of denial with, to the council for this specific language that's before you with kind of, for lack of a better term, a rider along with that, saying that, "Council, we need to look at this granularity issue more citywide." Because there, we all have examples where we have, you know, a, a smaller lot than 10,000 square feet was going to go in and was turned down, or or some things like that. We really need to look at how all neighborhoods deal with the granularity. And granularity really is kind of a shorthand for what Mr. Henry brought up about strong neighborhoods. It's more about really diversity of income than necessarily single-family home as opposed to stacked units. And so I would recommend that if, if the Planning Commission really wants to talk about it as a broader level, then I would suggest a recommendation of denial, but then tell the council that this issue ought to be looked at citywide, because you need to remember, we do actually have a developer with a specific project in front of the council looking for an approval. Now, that recommendation that goes to council, council can look at your recommendation and they can follow it, modify it, or not follow it. And so they could go back and approve the underlying development that's in the wings that's generating this. But I would hate to not send something back to Planning Commission unless we're continuing it for specific information that you think we could, if you went, Gary, if you went and got this piece of information for me and brought it back, that will help me make a decision. that you think we could, if you went, Gary, if you went and got this piece of information for me and brought it back, that will help me make a decision of whether I vote to approve or deny this application. Does that make sense? Or did I muddy the waters horribly?
Perfect sense? Perfect sense to me.
A broken clock is right twice a day.
Essentially, any questions maybe of Mr. McGinn? Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Kiaga?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Jensen's comment and Mr. McGinn's clarification. And so with that, I am going to withdraw my previous motion and move that we deny item number one, community or that we recommend denial to the city council of item number one. Do I need to restate it again?
I think that's sufficient.
I would focus on if you have any particular writers that you would like to add to that motion.
And that we would like to see the development office come back with a citywide granularity recommendation. And I'm trying to think of what else we need to say with written in ways that will apply more specifically to Provo and the various neighborhoods here.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Jensen. So the motion is to recommend denial of item number one, that is the general plan amendment to clarify the existing west side development policies and future land use map with an intent statement along with the, the the proposal that the issue instead be visited on a citywide basis. Am I close with that? And that further discussion happened after the community development staff is an opportunity to, to work on that. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we will go roll call then. We'll start to my left with Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Nay.
I vote aye. Commissioner Urquaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson? And Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry, do you want to clarify anything about your thoughts on that or not?
No, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. We'll move on then to item number two. Which is a proposal made by Community and Neighborhood Services to change the zoning from R110 single-family residential to open space preservation and recreation for approximately 26.11 acres located near the access area to Slate Canyon. Ms. McNally, please.
Thank you. So our proposal is to Okay, sorry about that. So our proposal is to rezone. You can see the map on the left. This it, the current zone is R110. It's a part, it's just over 26 acres. It's, it is at the mouth of Slate Canyon. We're proposing that we rezone that to the open space preservation zone. With the intent that this will be part of, become part of Parks and Rec's master plan. They'll be doing a phased approach to developing Slate Canyon, I imagine, for trails and just to keep it open space. There are no proposed developments on this site, and this is part of the critical hillside overlay. So not only will we preserve this open space, we'll also prevent development on that critical hillside. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions of staff on this one?
I was just gonna also add that the reason that we can implement this proposed zone is because this is property that's now owned by the city. So it's not privately owned. So that's important.
I don't hear anybody. I don't see any, right? We're good? Okay. If there's no discussion to be had with staff, is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak to item number two?
Hi, I'm Kyle Clausen, representing myself, Kyle Clausen, and I live just in Canyon Meadow, which is just right next to there. And I think this is a good idea. I think there's not much else that I think would go well up there. And I think being able to clean it up a bit, there's, sometimes we walk up there and you find like beer stuff and, and I think if we were able to make it a bit more beautiful and a bit more inviting, not only would it help the neighborhood sort of appreciate that zone more, I think we would see less of the sort of like beer bottle throwing on the ground and cracking and exposing class to everyone.
Super. Thanks. Close the public hearing? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion on item number two? Mr. Jensen?
I wanted to address something Kyle said. My understanding is that the open space zone change, change would not automatically make a park there. And the Parks Department isn't actually, I don't think, planning on making any improvements in the immediate future to it. So it won't actually look like a park. But what I do like about it is that it puts the, the implementation of the critical hillside overlay zone into, like, it kind of gets that ball rolling of, of the intent of both this open space zone as a protective place and the critical hillside overlay as another protective safeguard. And what you said, it's, it may be zoned single-family, but that would be crazy talk with the terrain and everything else up there. So I think we might still see the garbage for a while. But it definitely sends a message that they care about it. I, I just love that it aligns with the intent of that open space zone that we, that we all voted to change a little while ago and with the intent of the critical hillside zone. It makes sense to change this. So those are my comments.
Super. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I love it. 10 of 10. No changes. I'm in.
I'll just add that I also think that implementing the critical hillside overlay this way is a great idea. And don't see any reason not to do this.
And I just want to say, I spend actually quite a bit of time in Slate Canyon. And a lot of stuff has been cleaned up in the last six months up there. I've had nothing to do with that, but I sure appreciate it. It's really like graffiti removal and stuff like that. It changes the atmosphere.
The graffiti went back the next week, but it was nice for a while.
Not what I'm used to.
Okay, good.
So that's and not what I got used to. That's my only comment. And
On page four, I just had a question, I realized. Letter G, it says verification of correctness in the original zoning. It says the current general plan designation for the area is agricultural. And there wasn't a general plan map with this. Is that really the case for that whole hillside? It's agricultural?
That's what it's designated as, but it really doesn't need a general plan amendment if we're implementing a zoning that's more restrictive.
Okay. I just thought that was interesting because it's clearly not agricultural.
Agriculture in the general plan was more of a placeholder. And this, because we didn't have this particular zone, so this actually is better protection. I would also just add that the Parks Department is working on, you know, they're working with landscape architects and coming up with a, a plan. Probably won't see that for a while, like Lisa mentioned, but it is in the works and.
Because I was sitting on a committee with the Parks Department and it was the land from the road that takes you up to the park over. So it doesn't go very much further south than where the pavilion currently is at the top of the hill. It was my understanding, but it might, it might be changed now that they've acquired some land, so.
Yeah, it's changed now.
Okay. Awesome.
Now that the city owns this, the, the Parks Department is actively looking at and making plans for and doing things. It's, it's not going to happen this year. And it's all contingent on funding and things like that. But the Parks Department, I can tell you, is absolutely excited about this and mayor's just thrilled about this opportunity to increase the park there and provide such a great amenity. That Slate Canyon area is beautiful and this will certainly be a wonderful enhancement.
I guess I just have one comment. I, I feel like this is the right way to have implemented the critical hillside overlay. I know there are people in my neighborhood that are furious with the way it was implemented on their properties. Several of them, that was their retirement, was to develop their properties and they can't now. And they're very upset about it, but to have purchased the property and then changed the zoning, I think that was probably the better way to do this than to surprise people with a change that that affected their plans that they'd had in the works for years. So that's my only comment.
This might be the easiest one I've seen yet. My opinion is. For good reason, right? Go ahead. I think we like that you make all the motions. We're fine with that.
Okay. I move that we recommend the approval of item number two to the municipal council. Community and Neighborhood Services requests a zone change from R110 single-family residential to open space preservation and recreation OSPR for approximately 26.11 acres located near the access area to Slate Canyon.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second.
I think it was Commissioner Jones. Motion to recommend approval of item number two. Any discussion on the motion? Don't see any. So once again, I'll just go the same order. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Commissioner Urquaga?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson? Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Super. Motion carries unanimous. Anything else we need to talk about tonight? Want to talk about?
I move that we adjourn.
Your motion second?
Second.
With six seconds, we're adjourned, so. I knew that. That one.
Was tricky.
I feel very thankful.
Feel lucky. It would be ambitious to do that something citywide like that. Really ambitious to try to mandate development citywide. Which one was that?